...of the Order of Agenda. Commissioner Clifford.
I move that we approve the Order of Agenda.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I'll second.
You had a motion, second, please vote. And that is approved. Moving on to approval of the minutes for May 7th, 2018. Any motions? Commissioner Clifford.
I move that we approve the minutes of May 7th, 2018.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I'll second.
You had a motion, second, please vote. All right, and that is approved. Moving on to designation of liaison for the City Council meeting for May 29th regarding the short-term rental ordinance.
Yes, so the Planning Commission's recommendation to the City Council will be considered on the 29th, and we would like to request a liaison. I just wanted to note that due the holiday, that is a Tuesday night.
Thank you. Any volunteers?
I'd be happy to do it.
All right. Commissioner Steggen, you're it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, oral communications. All right, this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter of the commission. That is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. If you'd like to speak, there's cards in the back of the room that you could fill out. I don't see any cards appear now, so I'm going to assume that we don't have any. So I'll close that. Consent items, doesn't appear there are any today, so we're on to a study session. And the study session is to discuss a site plan alternative which would allow construction of either 37 or 39 townhome dwelling units on an approximately 21-acre project site at 721 Oddstad Boulevard. The required approvals here would include a general plan amendment, rezoning, site development permit, use permit, and a tentative subdivision map. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. Given that the format of this evening's item is a study session, it will result in a somewhat briefer staff report than usual. There are not specific issues of the project that have been analyzed and findings recommended. Rather, this is an opportunity for the applicant to engage in a dialogue with the commission and to receive feedback on the project. I just think of note, it's important to mention the general plan and zoning entitlements that would be required. The site is currently designated commercial, and that was the result of 2012 change in the designation, and it would need to change to high-density residential to accommodate this project. Similarly, the zoning, it's currently Zoned C1, Neighborhood Commercial, and the zoning would need to change to R3 Multiple Family Residential to enable this project. Otherwise, the applicant has submitted two alternatives for discussion with the Planning Commission. One of them is, I think, most notable, given its tandem parking configuration of many of the units, and the other alternative has proposed side-by-side garages. There are two clarifications I'd like to make to information in the staff report. The first is a correction. The second alternative, in fact, has 10 guest parking spaces. The staff report incorrectly mentioned that there were eight. There are two, the rear portion of the site, that were not counted by staff when drafting the report. And the second clarification is regarding the open space requirement in the city's clustered housing zoning provisions. Clustered housing typically meaning condominium or townhome-style development of ownership units as opposed to rental units. The staff report concluded that the open space requirement is 750 square feet for this proposal. In fact, some of the units have an overlapping or interlocking design in the floor plans, and for those units, by definition in the city zoning, they would be required to have only 450 square feet of open space. And so whatever application may move forward in the future, staff would analyze that on a unit-by-unit basis to determine the open space requirement and then aggregate that for the project. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report. Of course, staff is here to answer questions, and the applicant is also here, and would like to make a slide presentation as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, at this point, we'll call up the applicant to give the slide presentation. We'll have time... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Clifford.
Questions for staff?
Sorry, questions for staff. I got ahead of myself. Questions for staff. I know there's questions.
My one question is, is that in terms of the tandem parking, I thought the state had superseded our original rules of no tandem parking. Is that true, that tandem parking is now allowed by the state but not by, wasn't allowed by the City of Pacifica?
I am unaware of any blanket prohibition on requiring side-by-side parking as opposed to tandem parking. What you may be referring to is the state's explicit prohibition of, or I should say, explicit requirement that cities allow tandem parking for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. In that particular instance, the state has said cities must allow tandem parking to satisfy the off-street parking requirement, if there is one, for ADUs.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I needed that.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, hi. Just to clarify, the open space requirements between 450 and 750 square feet per unit, is that correct?
That's correct, and it depends on the type of clustered housing. The zoning describes what is defined in our zoning as a townhouse. Most of us would think of it as a townhome, perhaps, but the definition of townhouse talks about not having another unit above or below any portion of the unit. Because some of the units in Alternative 1 include an interlocking floor plan where some of the units would have a unit above or below, they are, by definition, clustered housing other than a townhouse, and so they would be subject to the 450-square-foot, the reduced requirement.
And does the existing design design for 450 or 750?
The existing design, I believe, designs for 450 square feet for all the units, and so there would still be a deficiency, but it would be much less than staff had concluded in its initial review.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Steggen.
I have a question about the zoning there. So the original permit, sorry, change was from 2012 from agricultural to commercial, correct?
Correct.
And nothing was ever built there at that? With that?
Correct.
And there's, and the permit, all the permits have expired right now, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on now to the applicant. Applicant will present the project to us. We'll probably have some questions for the applicant. We'll move on to public comment, and then we will bring it back for deliberation. Commissioner Clifford.
I wanted to acknowledge that I met the applicant at the recent ethics training. We did not discuss this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, okay. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time. I'm Samantha Hauser with City Ventures. And kind of in the context of what Commissioner Clifford said, I'd like to disclose that I am on one of the city's committees, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen. With that being said, we have been working closely with staff on this project over the past year. We've explored a few different concepts and, you know, different architectural styles, and we're really at the point where we're down to two site plans, and we're really hoping for input from the commission on how to proceed. With that being said, I want to speak a little bit about City Ventures. We are a local infill developer. We do both development and building, and what I mean when I say urban infill is we build in the context of existing neighborhoods and in metropolitan areas, which we think in the context of California's current climate is really crucial. In that same vein, we are also a sustainable developer. We do things like solar all-electric, which this project would be. There's no gas to the site. We pre-wire all garages for electric vehicle charging. We do low-flow fixtures, low-impact landscaping. We design creatively to use less lumber, and then a whole bunch of other items that I won't go into, but when you add them together, they really make a really good impact on our environment. City Ventures currently has about 30 to 35 active projects, and as an infill developer, they all look very different. But with that being said, for kind of this Lindemore Back of the Valley site, I thought that a really appropriate architectural style was some sort of coastal craftsman style, and I'll show you on our elevations what I mean by that. I wanted to show a couple of different projects that have either been completed by us or under construction in Scotts Valley, Union City, Santa Cruz, Maraga, where we use kind of a similar architectural style, similar materials, siding styles, but we'd really like the commission's input on the elevations that we have tonight, and we're hoping for the public's input as well. The site, as Mr. Murdock stated, is just south of Park Mall. It's about 10 to 15 feet below grade, so it kind of sits in a bowl compared to Park Mall. We're across the street from the Pacific Oaks Senior Center. We're just north of Toledo Court with single-family homes. We have three-story apartments on Terranova as well as Sanchez Library, and then the closest parks are the San Pedro County Park, and then Frontier Land, I would say, is also within walking distance. The site itself, to Commissioner Steggen's point, was a nursery with outbuildings that I would say have kind of reached obsolescence. They haven't been used in quite some time. This kind of septic tanks, pump stations, other than that, the site is vacant. But the site was entitled in 2012. It was approved by Planning Commission and City Council for a 96-unit facility with 70 parking spaces, and on this project, the approved plans had studios and one-bedroom homes. We think in the context of the surrounding area that going from 96 units to 39 or 37 units, somewhere around 40, would be a little bit more appropriate, and so we are proposing to reduce the amount of units and increase the amount of parking appropriate with the city, appropriate to what the city provides for in their code. So instead of 70 parking spaces, increasing it to 84 or 88, dependent on what site plan this commission gives feedback to proceed with. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we're really looking to have a lot of different architectural plans. We think it's important to have all four sides of our buildings have a lot of articulation and have changes in massing. We also want to use different materials, different siding types and roofing materials, and different colors to create visual interest. We worked over the last year with planning on a lot of different elevational styles. One thing that we explored was a flat roof style, where a parapet would hide the solar panels and the HVAC units on the roof. We also looked at a pitched roof that had a much higher incline, but that would require a height variance, so I think the elevation that we're showing you tonight is where staff has directed us, and we'd like to make sure that's the right direction. With that being said, the site itself, as you can tell by the configuration, has very little formal frontage on Oddstad Boulevard. So between Site Plan A, which is 39 homes, and Site Plan B, which is 37 homes, you see that the site entry on the right of the screen is really kind of in a predetermined location. We've also worked with the fire department on abandoning the idea of a less formal turnaround in favor of a formal hammerhead. So you see that both Option A and Option B both have a hammerhead at the west side of the site. Other than that, the biggest discrepancy or the biggest difference between the two plans, as Mr. Murdock stated, is not only the number of homes, 39 in Plan A and 37 in Plan B, but about 50%, I think it's 53% of the homes in Plan A have two-car tandem garages and two-car side-by-side garages for 47%. In Plan B, and this was something that was proposed after the first site plan, Plan A, we have 37 homes, and each of them has a two-car side-by-side garage. Both site plans really pay attention to light and air and trying to create some visual interest as you drive in. I think our preference in light of the current housing shortage would be to pursue Plan A, but I understand that that's not something that this part of Pacifica sees very often, and so we would really like input on whether or not it's worth it to pursue a parking variance. With that, I'll leave you with some imagery of what we're thinking about for the landscaping. We'd like to be water-wise and respectful and have modern elements that really meet the craftsman-style architecture that we're proposing. It's really, we're really grateful for your time, and we're really appreciative at the perspective of becoming part of the fabric of the city, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Clifford.
In your green building applications, I wanted to know if you were doing anything with gray water.
You know, I think that's a possibility that we would explore. We've done it on different projects, and it really depends on how much room we have on the site. There's a lot of infrastructure that goes with gray water, so we'd be happy to take a look at it.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, just following up on that question, is any of the building going to follow any LEED certifications?
So that's a great question. We have projects that we've LEED certified, but we really like to spend the money on actually providing amenities within the project. So what I mean by that, for example, is a lot of people will pre-wire for solar. We actually provide the panels. We'll do a monolithic array that's at the most, the most optimal location. So I wouldn't, we would not be pursuing a LEED certification. There are other types of certifications that we build to, for example, CalGreen Tier 1, and so we'd probably look at some of those other certifications that are less costly.
Okay, Commissioner Krasky.
Can you specify the setback from the San Pedro Creek?
Sure. So it varies, so the creek obviously runs in different locations from the homes, and so it really does differ depending on where you are. What we've done is we've pursued a plan where we wouldn't be looking at touching or impacting any jurisdictional waters, any stream bed alterations, any riparian areas, so we've completely stayed out of those spaces to be mindful of the fact that we are adjacent to a creek.
So what's the average setback? Do you have that?
You know, on the south side, I'd have to, I'd have to follow up with that information from you.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Yeah, actually, I think Commissioner Krasky asked the question I had. I just don't know, I was just, maybe, maybe it's something that's unknown at this point, but any sense at this point as to whether Plan A or Plan B would be more or less impactful of the stream? I mean, it looks like it's about the same amount of development on the south side of the parcel, so...
Sure. So the, there's actually, San Pedro Creek actually goes on the south side and the west side of the parcel. So one of the key differences that you can see between A and B is that A has the hammerhead further west, and B has homes that really align the creek on both sides. You know, when you say more or less impactful, both plans, no matter what we pursue, we're really, we want to be respectful of the environment, and we're really dedicated to not opening up any sort of jurisdiction requiring any take permits. We don't want to have any negative impact on the biology here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford? Did you, is that an old stale light?
I did have a question.
Okay.
You have considered, I'm assuming, bioswells along the edge of the creek?
We are doing everything that we can to actually grade the site away from the creek so that we wouldn't have water outflowing. That goes back into Commissioner Krasky's question about impacts. We don't want to have any sort of impact where we'd need to get a jurisdictional permit to drain into the creek. I know other adjacent, like, so if you, if you look at an aerial of the site, you can see that, you know, on Alicante, on Rosita, all of these streets do have homes living on the creek, and a lot of them do outfall into the creek currently, but that would require work with the federal government and the state government, and it would cause an impact that we're not looking to cause.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Is there a difference in the net open space area between Plan A and Plan B? And, I mean, from looking at it, I mean, it looks like Plan B may have less open space, but in either case, can it satisfy what's probably more open space, you know, as described earlier by staff?
Sure. So I, I'm glad you asked that, because I wanted to clarify that Site Plan A was what we brought in as the first submittal, and that actually had, so the way open space is defined in the code is both decks, patios, and then common open space. So I believe that Plan A has 801 square feet per home, so we, we do meet the requirement on Plan A. Plan B, you, as we have side-by-side garages, yes, there's a little bit more of a footprint, so we're closer to the 750, but we did, we did think that 450 was the requirement for both plans, so whatever we do, we'll look at it, and we'll make sure that we meet the code requirement.
All right, Commissioner Krasky.
Can you confirm both plans conformed to the 35-foot height restriction?
Yes, they do. The original elevations that we were looking at, some did not and some did, and staff directed us towards an elevation that would be within the 35-foot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steggen.
What's a, I know average is a little hard to calculate on the fly. What's a minimum setback you've got from the creek currently?
The minimum setback from the creek? I think, you know, I'd want to get back to you with an accurate number. It's less than 20.
Less than 15?
I think it's around 15, but I would want to get back to you with an accurate number, Commissioner.
I looked through the whole document, I didn't see square footage or minimum maximum for units. What's the minimum-sized unit you're creating?
Sure. So that actually is one variant between Site Plan A and Site Plan B. Site Plan A, the homes with the tandem parking garages are around 1,350 square feet, and the ones with the two-car side-by-side garages are around 1,650 to 1,750, depending on whether it's an end condition. They're about three bedrooms. Site Plan B is a slightly larger unit, and those range between 1,600 and 1,800, except for three smaller homes on the front, which are in the range of 1,200 square feet.
Last question. You mentioned that certain buildings had survived or been built between 2012 and 2017, sorry, 2012 and 2018, structures that remained on the 2012 site?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, you mentioned some structures had been built or survived in 2012.
No, so the, the only buildings that are on the site, and I'll go back to the imagery, so the only buildings that are on the site are buildings that predate 2012 and that were part of the nursery.
Are the lower left and the lower right the same building?
No, they're not.
What's the rough square footage of either of those buildings?
I believe it's about 1,500 square feet, but I would also want to confirm that for you, and I can send you an email to that regard.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Thanks, just one more question for me, and that was regarding the elevation study and the flat roof alternative. I understand that meets, under Alternative A or B, you'd be meeting the 35-foot requirement. If you were to go with a pitched roof, how much of a variance would you need for that in some of the things you were kicking around?
Sure. So the pitched roof is actually plus or minus 39 feet, and so it wouldn't be very much of a variance at all, it would be four feet, and we'd be happy to pursue either option. I think one of the biggest differences would be that we'd have to find room for the HVAC units on the ground, but that, you know...
To your preference, was your preference more in the nature of a flat roof, or was it?
You know, we really, we're open, I want to go back to the slide showing some of our projects. So on the bottom right, the Union City project, it's a very, it's a little bit of a different style, kind of the old California Victorian architecture, but I think a flat roof works really well here, whereas if you look at the Scotts Valley architecture on the upper left, I think a gabled roof is really nice in that condition. So it just depends, and it depends on what you want to see, but we can change the design to meet what you're looking for.
Yeah, I was kind of going back and forth myself as to what aesthetically I thought was more pleasant to look at. Thanks.
Commissioner Krasky.
Yes, I didn't see in the notes, but are there any heritage trees that are slated to be removed for this project?
No, there are no heritage trees.
You know, approximately how many trees in general are going to be removed?
So the majority of the tree, I guess you can't really see from the, from the site plan because I covered it. The majority of the trees on site are part of the riparian area, which we're leaving in place. I believe there's one peppercorn tree and some small shrubbery that we'd be removing, but other than that, and actually, it depends, so let me back up. If I'm remembering the heritage tree ordinance correctly, that peppercorn tree might be large enough to be consistent with it, but it's not a protected species. Sure.
Phew, all right. That's it for questions for now. We might call you back up after we've heard from the public. I'm going to call some speakers up, three minutes each, and then I'll bring it back to the commission. So first up would be Roger Macio.
Hello, my name is Roger Macio. I live in the beautiful city of Pacifica. I have lived on Toledo Court directly across the creek from the proposed project for the last 30 years. I've also been a member of the San Pedro Creek Watershed Coalition for the last 18 years. We have been trying to protect the steelhead and its habitat. The steelhead in this creek are on the endangered list. San Pedro Creek is the only creek between Half Moon Bay and Marin County that has steelhead spawning in it. The Department of Fish and Wildlife will no longer allow the planting of steelhead in our creek. The only way to restore the steelhead population is to improve and protect its habitat. This is a valuable resource that can be enjoyed by, by us and generations to come if we protect it. How many cities in our country have a creek that has steelhead spawning in it? The Middle Fork and going up into San Pedro Valley Park are the prime spawning grounds. They are arguably much better than the lower reaches. I have watched the steelhead spawn here. Right now, the creek bordering the proposed project, you can, you can observe one-inch-long steelhead fry that were born this year and two-inch to 14-inch steelhead. The coalition has not had an agenda-sized meeting yet on this project, but we have been discussing it. We feel that the size of this project on such a small site would have an adverse indirect or secondary impact to the creek. We would like to see a 100-foot setback or more from the creek bank. We would like any plans to include a real geotechnical report that deals with the very steep, unstable slopes along the margins. Erosion of the banks is a major problem. The erosion cuts off the fish and other marine life's oxygen. I guess that's the end?
You've got another minute. You have another minute.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry. Erosion of the banks is a major problem. The erosion cuts off the fish and other marine life's oxygen, and they cannot live. I have watched the farmer a couple of times a year grade the property flat and with his tractor push the extra dirt onto and over the bank to expand his farmable land. The banks were not compacted and are not stable. We would like an EIR report for this project, and that it be prepared by a reputable company that the community approves. We found many flaws in the EIR report for the assisted-living facility. It was not accurate. It appeared as though the author never spent any time at the creek. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for your time.
All right, next up is Rick Zipkin.
Hello, my name is Rick Zipkin, and I've lived at 725 Oddstad Boulevard for about 16 years.
If you could speak into the mic, sorry.
I'm sorry, start over, please. Yes, my name is Rick Zipkin, and I have lived at 725 Oddstad Boulevard for about 16 years. It has been idyllic, and we have loved it in every way. However, with this recent threat of proposed residential building right behind us at 721 Oddstad, all this is being threatened. With all the loud noise and groundbreaking construction that would be going on for an extended period of time, our life would be very inconvenienced for myself, for my girlfriend, and especially for a little three-and-a-half-pound Yorkie dog who would go absolutely ballistic if he ever heard any loud noise, prolonged, or driving noises. For him to be subjected to this all day, every day for an extended period of time would be truly devastating. Critically, there are endangered species in this area. Critically, there are endangered species in this area, most notably steelhead salmon, red-legged frog, and probably the SF garter snake who live here and hopefully will continue to live and prosper here, but only if their habitat and environment is allowed to remain the same as there's always been. There are a number of valuable and credible studies that have shown that these said species are significantly negatively affected when there is loud, prolonged, ground-shattering construction noise pollution in this area. For the endangered steelhead salmon, this can be especially critical where the noise pollution travels five times faster in the water than it does in the land. University of Maryland professor Arthur Papa and his colleagues found that injury to fish ears and thus hearing are even greater than they anticipated, and were surprised that the trauma was so extended and so great. And most fish use hearing to sense acoustic environment. Many use sounds to detect predators, find prey, and communicate to find mates. Loss of hearing can leave a fish very vulnerable to predators or to the ability to find mates, and their sensory hair cells don't come back even over a two-month period. With steelhead salmon already an endangered species, these disabilities will cause further decrease in numbers, certainly leading to extinction of these wonderful species, and even fish larvae are affected. We cannot allow this aforementioned loud noise and ground-shaking one-to-two-year construction to do this to God's beautiful creatures. There is similar research and finding concerning the endangered red-legged frog, and according to Dr. Kirsten in Melbourne, Australia, noise pollution can have like results in the red-legged frog, that is effectively ending their reproductive powers, et cetera. Also, noise pollution may alter established behavior of animals and have a less obvious negative effect on the physical well-being. Again, we are a retired couple living on a fixed income, living in a wonderful city area and location, living in a paradise. Please, 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 some areas should remain as they are meant to be, quiet, peaceful, and pristine, ecologically and environmentally protected. Please do the right, conscientious, and even moral thing. Thank you very much for listening to me and for your time and consideration on this vital and important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jerry Davis.
Thank you, my, my name is Jerry Davis. I'm a resident of Pacifica, 1119 Mazzanita Drive, and I'm also a professor of geography and environmental science at San Francisco State University and the chair of the department. I've studied this, my specialty, my specialization is geomorphology. I've studied this creek for 20 years. I've surveyed every, the entire reach of the creek. I've done intensive studies in this, in this area. I testified to the planning commission in 2012, having problems with the assessment and problems with the, the analysis of data by the planning department and the flawed geotechnical report, which was trusted by the commission, even though it completely ignored the landslide hazard along the edge. The, that geotechnical report only looked at the flat area at the top of the terrace, there's no problem there. The edge of the terrace is, is an over 100% gradient. I've studied the entire reach all the way around this. It's an unstable site, there have been landslides in recent history, there will continue to be. I have data showing how much erosion the creek has done in that site. It's not a place to build a facility like this. Putting a bioswale along the edge of this is foolish, because it does nothing when you have a landslide impacting that. That was approved by the planning commission, it was foolish. I have data to, to, to share with, with the planning department and the planning commission. I have my assessment done from, from 2012, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Owen Brizzez, apologies if I got that wrong.
Yeah, hi, my name is Owen Brizgees. I live at 1203 Galvez Drive in Pacifica, and I'd just, I'd like to reiterate some of the earlier speakers and just bring up the fact that the San Pedro Creek is, you know, an extremely important community resource that we all, you know, have a part in, in preserving. And I also think it's a force of nature that does create some very compli, you know, some, some complex ge, geological and, and geographic problems for the site. I think the fact that there's, there's no section views or any real, you know, analysis of, of how this site interacts with that stream bed is, is a little bit disturbing to me, and I think that you guys should ask some more questions about what, what exactly, you know, those sections are going to look like at multiple locations, how low that stream bed is, you know, what those, what those failure planes of, of landslides will be, what that, you know, what that plane will be, and if armoring will be required along that edge, because that is not, that is not a sustainable solution. It's not unlike, you know, other steep, unstable slopes in this, in this town, you know, at the waterfront. It's not something we want to be dealing with going forward as this infrastructure, you know, slides into a steelhead-rearing creek. You know, it's a fork of the, of the middle, or it's the confluence of the Middle Fork and the North Fork. It's probably meant, meant to be a meandering, you know, structure, and, you know, anecdotes of fill, you know, creating that level terrace would cause me a real pause in, in agreeing to, you know, any kind of increased residential development in that, in that area. So without a lot more analysis, you know, I would recommend not making a change of the general plan in this location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Olivia Fox.
Hi, can we ask questions too?
I think it's a one-way street.
All right then, well then, I will assume that there aren't any other HDR-zoned lots immediately adjacent to that one. And one of the reasons that we chose to buy a property where we did on Toledo Court is precisely because we were looking to get away from high-density residential zoning as in San Francisco. My main concern is that the applicant seemed to have a lot of really concrete and really solid answers about the construction. When asked about the impact on the creek, the applicant could not answer a single question with any certitude. That's concerning. It's lovely to hear that they want to be respectful and that they don't want to have an impact, and that's delightful, and we haven't heard anything that would guarantee that. So as all the other previous speakers, I am concerned about the protected species, and the question I had, which I guess is a one-way street, but I'll leave that as a hypothetical, two questions, well, no, really one. What would happen if there were litigation from adjacent parcels? I.e., what would happen if we were to litigate their posteriors? That would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you. My final card for the evening is Tom Dennison.
Good evening, I'm a longtime resident of Toledo Court, right near where the, the area is going to be built. So there's, a week doesn't go by where the Pacifica Tribune doesn't have an article about the dire housing crisis in the Bay Area and specifically Pacifica. So in 2012, it was zoned for 96 single, uh, studios. So my question is, why are we settling for less than 40, when if you go up another two, two or three stories, you can get 120? So why isn't, why aren't we developing more housing on that lot? Secondly, on the, to talk about the watershed area and the water draining into the creek, there's open sewers there to go in, to drain the streets in Toledo Court and also on Oddstead. If you've ever been down there after a heavy rainstorm, at the, the North Fork, that drains all the northern part of the town, that part of Pacifica, it comes, the water that, that comes out of that sewer pipe is the color of rotten milk, and that's what it smells like. So we, if they claim about this impacting the steelhead, they're already being impacted. And quite frankly, with the way, the design I saw about the, what they're going to do with the swales and the construction, you'll probably have less runoff into the creek than you have now. So I think they'll actually do a better job than what you're getting there currently. And then you mentioned about putting in AC units. This is Pacifica, you don't need AC. I mean, this is a warm day in July right now, so you can save some money on that part. And then I, I would hope that the, there's another huge parcel of land that the city owns by Sanchez Library, why aren't we developing that? I mean, and there was a recent article about the budget, about Pacifica's budget, where 50% of the, our money comes from property taxes. So my question is, how much will you enhance our, our budget by the property taxes for this development? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any more speaker cards up here, and first I'd like to actually thank all the speakers who came up tonight, because you're taking time out of your day to come up and speak, and that's always much appreciated, and we appreciate hearing from you. I am going to bring back deliberations, in a sense, well, we can talk, we can bring back up the applicant if we want to, is my understanding, so I, I think, I haven't spoke yet, but I'll, I'm gonna just jump in, because I haven't asked any questions. So I was on the commission in 2011, 2012, and everyone's sick of hearing that, and voted for the assisted living center at the time, just full disclosure, the previous proposal for this site. And I, I do understand that when we did vote for that, there was a lot of consternation among the, the neighborhood and the public at the time about the impacts to the creek, but, and also noise, traffic, and, and visual. So, you know, one of the things that I'm going to want to know, and this is to instruct the applicant, is how this project is going to differ from what was approved, because that was, there were some material aspects of the previous project that were, that were under consideration. One of the main things was light and noise, from what I understand. The last project was 90 units, but it was assisted living, so the thinking was it would be a fairly quiet facility. There would be visitors during visitor hours, but other than that, it was going to be something that was going to have a low impact as far as traffic and noise during off-business hours and probably even during business hours. So that, that was one thing. And I'd also, some of the other commissioners were talking about where this was relative to the creek, the setbacks, and that's something I'll be interested in understanding relative to the other project. I'm gonna leave it at that for now, but Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you, I, I think you hit some of the things that would be of interest to me. I'm just sort of curious about the level of environmental, environmental analysis that might be anticipated for a project like this. It sounds like, going back to 2012, it was probably some fairly significant analysis done, I don't know how much of that is subject to being repurposed, it's a very different, it's a different project, obviously with a different project description, but I, I, it looks like, based on the size of the document, the EIR was done at the time, whether or not you think we'd be looking at an EIR, a mitigated NIGDAC, or some other form of document, I'm just sort of curious about whether staff has any thoughts at this point, or whether it's too preliminary to really say.
It's really too soon to tell. We don't even have a complete application as far as processing the development permits. The applicant just really wanted to get some conceptual feedback at this early stage. Staff is a long way to go in its analysis, and that would certainly inform any environmental review.
Thank you. I guess what I'd say is, you know, just as a, as a concept, it looks like something that I, I think would warrant further consideration, certainly something that I would be interested in seeing further analyzed, I think, as it was noted by at least one member of the public, there's some economic upside to all this, housing is always a concern, the, the need for housing, some very significant concerns raised here around things like traffic, light, noise, endangered species, some geotechnical concerns that were raised, so all those things I think are really, there's a lot that needs to be analyzed and, and sort of looked at, but, you know, subject to, to those sorts of things, being analyzed, I'd certainly be interested in hearing more about this down the road.
All right, Commissioner Kraski.
Just one request for the staff. Would you be able to provide the minutes for the assisted living facility project, just to, to us, so we can refresh our, our memory? Of course, happy to, to share them, you know, this week, if that would be helpful, or sometime later, closer to when this might come for a public hearing. I don't know what the sense of the commission is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
I would think that closer to when this is actually coming back would be more useful, because then you, you wouldn't have to do it twice.
Perhaps even in the staff report that might come, come out at, at whatever time this matter comes back to us, perhaps it could be one of the exhibits to the staff report.
Yeah, I think I, I want to make sure that we have a clear separation between that prior project, this, that, this is not that project, and so-
Oh, that, I understand it's crystal clear, but I, again, is something that was specifically asked for. Frankly, if it comes in a separate trans, transmittal, that's fine too, but I wouldn't probably look at it until that time.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
Uh, one, I want to acknowledge that I was also on the commission when this, when the previous project, the assisted living center, was approved, and there were a lot of concerns about setback from the creek, and it will be one of those things that I personally will be looking at. And in terms of the issues that the applicant was looking to have decided at this point, or not decided, but, direction, I am wary of tandem parking, if nothing else, for the inconvenience to the actual applicant, actual owners in the future, and so I would be looking more at the 37-unit project. And, let's see, there were, there were other things you were asking for, so let me get to that page. I didn't tab it like I usually do. Okay. I'll, I'll yield the floor for a moment and let anybody else that wants to talk, I can, I can go back to that.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Uh, just a question for the applicant, is this a for-sale or for-rent project?
Yes, um, this, this would be a 100% for-sale project, so.
Thanks.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I guess a follow-on question to that then, would this be subject to our inclusionary housing ordinance if it were for-sale?
It would, and it likely would require six below-market rate units.
Excellent. And I guess I, in the spirit of, as was offered by one of my fellow commissioners, I, I guess I would say that on balance, I, although, you know, I think concerns about tandem housing are significant, I think Plan A might be marginally preferable to me since you'd have maybe a little less housing against the west end of the project up against the, up against one of the creek beds. So I think Plan A might be kind of more the direction I would want to go. And I, I actually, I think as I've thought about it some more, have a, a preference perhaps for pitched roofing, as opposed to flat roofing, just as a, as a, recognizing at a very early stage.
Just gonna jump in here, since we're on the subject of roofing, yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested in just the visual impacts from the vantage point of the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood. I know that was, that was a big deal for the neighbors. I'm not, there's a lot of apartment buildings in this area, but not right there next to the, the homes. So it's, it's always a little, um, plopping apartment buildings or townhome, big townhome projects in the middle of kind of a residential, single-home neighborhood is something that has to be done with a, a lot of care, especially from the visual point of view, because you can have a lot of light, a lot of noise, a lot of traffic, and if it's not done right, it can really degrade, you know, a, a single-family neighborhood that is, you know, adhered to its zoning for 30 or 40 years, and here we are, changing zoning and putting in something different. And, and just, on that note, you know, this was ag, zoned ag, and then it got zoned to commercial, which in itself was a bit of a leap, but I, I do recall that the zoning to commercial was favored because actually, the, it's, the economic benefit to the town is, you know, this can be argued, but the economic benefit to the town can be greater than residential. And also you have, you can potentially have less impacts to the surrounding neighborhood based on business hours, it depends on the project. And now we're going from ag to commercial to high, the highest density, highest density residential that we can give. So there's these leaps that the surrounding neighborhood, I think, you know, they're gonna have some concerns, so I think the visual aspects, so when we go to roofing styles, I just want to, would like to see where that's headed and, and how that looks height-wise to folks. All right, well, Commissioner Rubenstein, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, just, just- Yeah, just, just concurring with the fellow commissioners. To me, the pitched roof would be more in line with the residential neighborhood that this proposed site's going to be located, understanding that the height, the zoning requirement for the height might be a challenge. I just wanted to add that.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Steggen.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant again, if we might. Yeah, I couldn't find the willing, word ceiling or height there anywhere other than the, the building in general. What were the proposed heights of the ceilings on these?
So, in, from the interior standpoint?
That's correct.
So, I believe it's a nine-foot ceiling from floor to ceiling on each floor, on, on all three different types of elevations, the flat, the one that we've kind of brought forth tonight, and the pitched roof.
Is it you guys' intention to deliver low-income units that are compatible with the housing plan, or are you offering in-new fees on that?
So, we, as, as Mr. Murdock said, are anticipating that we would be providing the fifteen below-market rate homes, and that they would be consistent with the rest of the homes on the site. So, there wouldn't be a discrepancy in any way between the market rate and the below-market rate.
Chair, if I could ask a clarification, did you mean fifteen percent of the units, or fifteen units that you're?
Fifteen percent of the units.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for staff on there. One of the speakers had asked what the liability is if that, their, part of their property ends up in the creek. And I've never, I know the city attorney's not here, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what is the liability to the city itself when that happens?
I'm not prepared to address that question. I don't know if the planning director might be.
No, I understand. Maybe we'll just send that to the city attorney for covering next time on there. I noticed in the original 2012 plan that there's a, seems to be a very large offer of local employment there, pivotal to that. Essentially, the assisted living area would create a large number of employees. Do we have an idea of how many employees might be created there on this project? Is that, I don't see it mentioned anywhere.
Not at this time, and I'm not sure whether any employment would be created other than periodic maintenance work on the site.
Do, I hear that the design aspect of the pitched roof and what it might provide, is there an instance on, say, the flats of Lindemar everywhere, anywhere where we've adjusted the, included a height variance there? Has any building like this given, ever been given a height variance in Pacifica when it wasn't on the ridge line, or?
I think that would be pretty impossible to answer without doing some research.
Okay. Has it happened in the last year?
We don't recall.
Thank you.
I had a question for the applicant. Sorry to keep dragging you up. You mentioned possible variance for the height, and would any design that you propose, could any design meet the thirty-five-foot height limit that exists now?
Yes. So, of the three designs that we showed, the gabled, the pitched roof that you saw would be the one that required the height variance, the flat roof, and the kind of combination roof that was on the front slide. And I don't know if Mr. Murdock, you could bring that up?
Okay.
If you go one prior. So, that's, that's the elevation that we've been working on with staff, and this meets, this is within the, the height regulations.
Okay. Yeah, you know, my, my thinking would be to try to stay within the height regulations. We just really try to, to hew to that. We just put a, another proposed development to the, to, to, we held them as close as we could to that recently.
Yes.
And, yes. And, you know, as I think a lot of us mentioned, we just try to be, you know, other, other developers try to stay close, and we just try to be fair to everyone. So, I would try to keep that in mind. Commissioner Clifford.
Yeah, and I want to weigh in on the height limits, and I would like to see the buildings to be within our height, current height limits.
All right. I'm going, well, I'm going to bring it back to the applicant, and you could have a chance, usually in these hearings, a chance to respond, or if there's anything else you'd like to tell us before we.
Sure. Well, and I so appreciate your time and your feedback, and I also appreciate all the time that staff has spent working with us on the project. I think, I'd like to just kind of summarize what I've heard. So, I think on the whole scale, we'd like to see gabled elements, but we'd like to see the elevation stay within the height limit. I think it sounded like there was not necessarily a strong preference for A or B, but that we wanted to see more analysis on the creek setback. And I did want to take an opportunity to address that. As staff mentioned, this is a completely separate project to the assisted living facilities project and analysis, and we are anticipating doing a lot of analysis. We're also planning on meeting with the Creek Coalition. That meeting is scheduled. And I think that this is a real opportunity to be respectful of the creek, and we're looking to do that. And so, we appreciate the input, and we will come back with a full and well-thought-out analysis at the time that this becomes more formal. I also heard that we want to be really cognizant of visual impacts to neighbors because we are adjacent to a single-family home, and that we want to understand noise, traffic, and light impacts in particular. And I understand that there's a preference for the side, so between Plan A and Plan B, there's not really a preference for the design component of it, but there is a preference for the side-by-side garages, which we can look into. So, if, if there's any other direction that you would like to give to me and our design team, I am so appreciative. Thank you for your time.
Any final thoughts? Any final advice? Okay. Just a minute more. Commissioner Steggen.
I don't necessarily believe it's my task to tell you how your building should look on that property beyond the height dimensions, et cetera. I think your setback on the salmon is presented as grossly inadequate and should match county minimums since we don't have it delineated here. Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
I wanted to make sure that when you're considering your materials, that you consider the colors blending in and not standing out.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Do City Ventures have prior experience working, you know, adjacent to environmental, environmentally sensitive areas like San Pedro Creek?
Yes. We, as I mentioned, we have thirty-five active projects. We've constructed and completed an additional fifty projects, and we have additional projects in our pipeline. We build everywhere, Santa Rosa, Santa Cruz County. We build in places where we need to be really cognizant, and as a company that's environmentally sensitive and environmentally friendly, I think part of what I was trying to convey in my presentation was that we're really working hard to avoid any sort of, any sort of impact at all. We want to make sure that we are looking at the sections, as, as the community mentioned, and that we're aware of where creeks are, and that we're not requiring any sort of take permit, that we're not, you know, providing any sort of negative impact to any species.
At a future hearing, I'd like to see a very specific, site-specific work plan for this particular site in terms of how construction would unfold and how the creek would be protected during the construction. And then, of course, whatever elements are going to be incorporated into the design for, for the long-term protection.
And just actually, thanks, thank you for reminding me. I meant to bring it up. But as far as maintenance in, in the creek going forward, we just, we were talking about this with another, another developer in the southern part of town. But, you know, as you build next to the creek, there's going to be very likely some, if, if anybody builds next to the creek, there's going to be some, some sort of maintenance in the creek. There's probably going to be necessary fire break, weed control. I can only imagine. But it would be, I think, kind of imperative to kind of understand what your plan would be for keeping the integrity of the creek in place and including, including just maintenance.
Sure. And I think we can, we can come back with that information. I think one real benefit to having for-sale homes where there's an HOA is that you have a mechanism to continually provide funding for that kind of maintenance. So, we, we can definitely bring that back.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any more lights, so I think we are going to close this study session and bring it back to the commission. Let's see. I think we have Commission Communications. I'd like to thank you all for coming to the study session. Much appreciated. Commission Communications, Commissioner Clifford.
Okay, I have a few things to communicate. One is, is that I was at the city council meeting for the planning commission report, and I was also there for the Fassler project, which was approved by the city council with some interesting changes. And I'll let you guys go ahead and look those up. I don't need to report every, every word that was said. I also was at the library advisory committee meeting, and they are continuing to move forward. And we did look at some other pictures of various library possibilities and wrote down which ones we liked the best. But I want to be clear that that is not a definitive vote for a specific design. It's simply just looking at an overview of what our library might look like. Obviously, it would have, our library would have to be site-specific. And then finally, I did go to the ethics training, and I am now certified ethical. So, that, and that ends my report.
All right. Let's see. I'll report that I gave the state of the commission, I guess, report to the city at the last city council meeting. And generally, well, actually unanimously, well, now I say almost unanimously, received high praise from the council on what we're doing. One, I think one remark was that, one idea pitched was that we have a commission liaison to the city council meetings. It's something to consider. I thought it was a good idea, but we'll have to take it into consideration at some point, later point.
Just to be clear, is that different from the liaising we do when there's a particular item, or?
Yeah, it would be every, every meeting.
Thank you.
I don't see any lights, so I'm going to, oh.
I attended a couple of city meetings, including the marijuana lottery there. I think they took a group of twelve people and turned it into a, if you want to describe what happened, I'm sure it will be more accurate.
How was the bingo game?
Just the answer being, it occurred. I inspected the, the device. It seemed like, picked up the walls. It seemed like a fair game. And, and one, the, one applicant who had received first and third priority had, had eight applications total, and there seemed to be some people that were, did not expect that outcome.
I'm going to bring it to City Communications.
So, just to follow up on that. So, we did conduct the lottery just to set the order of prioritization for reviewing the marijuana use permit applications. And so, we are going to start processing four applications initially. And due to the way that the, the applications just happened to come in, and the numerical limit per overlay district, there'll be a maximum of five within this, this round of applications within the city. So, we're still determining whether or not the applications are complete. And once we do that, we'll kind of assess how long we think it will take to analyze the projects and come up with our staff recommendations to you, and we'll go ahead and agendize those items. Other news, we are moving forward with our sea level rise planning. We had a well-attended community meeting on the tenth on the economic methodology that's going to be used, so just to educate the public and have an opportunity for them to ask questions. And we'll have another meeting on the thirty-first of this month at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. We'll be, we will be presenting some adaptation strategy options to the community working group.
Thank you. One quick question on the cannabis ordinance. The folks who got picked, were, are they, how many were local business or versus out of city? Do you even know at this point?
I think one, one of them, the number one and number three, is local. And I don't know if I, if I have by memory how many of the other ones were.
I think of the four that we're processing, we don't have definitive information in the application to address this issue, but my sense is that one of them is an out-of-town business, and perhaps another one as well. I don't know as much about that applicant. Two of them, as the director said, we believe are local folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Steggen.
My other question is back on the cannabis registration. Was that $10,000 deposit refundable or non-refundable, or?
The deposits are refundable, so applicants whose applications will be processed certainly won't get all of their application deposits back. The city staff time will, will use some of that. For those that are not processed, they should expect to receive nearly all, if not all, of it to be refunded.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more lights, so, Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, I'm ready to move to adjourn, then.
Excellent. All right. Commissioner Clifford.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We had a motion. A second, please, vote. And that passes unanimously, and the meeting is now closed. Thank you.